I call this meeting the order on Monday, October 7th, 2019. I want to welcome everyone very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Christian Salzilo. This is as good as I'm going to get on that one. Life Church Smyrna, 4100 King Springs Road, who will give our invocation and lead us in the place of the flag. So would anyone please rise?
Father, I give you... Thanks for this gathering, for the opportunity to acknowledge your name in this place. Lord, we give you thanks for our community, for the people and the lives that make up our community. Lord, this is a special place and we have hearts of gratefulness. Lord, we don't take our liberties for granted. Those liberties to worship you, liberties to even, we acknowledge worship someone other than you, or even choose not to worship at all. Well, Lord, tonight I choose to acknowledge you and I give you thanks for all the good things in our lives. Lord, I thank you for these public servants, these men and women who make up the city council. Lord God, I thank you for our mayor. Lord, even as this long career comes to an end very soon, Lord God, we give you thanks for this man, this friend. Lord, he's a friend of Life Church, he's a friend of mine, he's a friend of our community. And Lord God, I pray that as we go into a new season in this community, that the bond between the community of faith and the city would remain strong. Lord God, we serve each other, we care for each other, we make each other better, and I give you thanks for that. Lord God, I pray for your blessing, I pray for your wisdom tonight. Lord, as issues are discussed and debated and talked about. Lord, as a Christian, I gladly pray in the name that I personally acknowledge to be my Lord and my Savior of all, even while acknowledging that not all here may. Lord God, we do pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I'm sure the folks at Life Church at 4100 King Springs Road be glad to have you if you want to change churches or if you're looking for a new church. They're good folks. Agenda changes, we really don't have anything. Before I get into the mayoral report, or as I get into the mayoral report, I want to recognize Ron Fennel, who's taking a picture now, council member from Ward 7, who has faithfully been a council member and done an outstanding job for the last almost eight years. And he chose not to run, and we knew he had put his house on the market, and the house sold quicker than he thought it was, and he's not up here tonight. I was just going to make an announcement and I'll go from there. Ron?
Thank you, and thank you all for being attentive and being a public servant as you are. I had to write this down because this could be an emotional moment, and I have my family here, and my wife is insistent that we do this straight, quick, and get out of here.
Do you know what the score is in the Brave game?
It was four to four when I last... Look. Bottom of the ninth?
Four to four, bottom of the ninth.
Four to four still in the bottom of the ninth. We're going to win this series and we're going to take it all the way. The Atlanta Braves are going to win the World Series in Cobb County. Isn't that amazing?
Yep.
Thank you, Tim Lee. I have to acknowledge, it wouldn't have happened without him. Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for giving me a few minutes tonight. I'm here on an earlier-than-expected mission. It's a testament to the city of Smyrna, our city's appeal and the strength of the real estate market, that I had the good fortune to find myself in this position. Customarily, a house being on the market takes a listing, a period of time for evaluation, showings, that sort of thing, 60 to 90 days. That's traditional. That's what I expected whenever I announced in September, September the 6th, that we're putting our house on the market. We closed this past week after 24 days on the market. The house on the market one day, went under contract that day, and it went through the due diligence period and everything to the closing table in 24 days. Smyrna's real estate market is strong and remains strong, and thank you for that, for my family. Bottom line, our house sold much quicker than expected, and now our new, a new family is residing in our findings estates home, and we enjoyed that house for many years. They'll enjoy it for many more as well. They're bringing grandchildren into the home and making a whole new nexus for their extended family. I'm excited for them. According to the city code and our legal counsel, when you don't occupy a home or you reside in our city, you can't represent that city. So I give today my notice, I take leave of my responsibilities and declare the Ward 7 vacant, post vacant for the time being. Fortunately, the election is less than 30 days away, there'll be a new face, one of the men that are competing, I see one of them here, I know one is to be here today, but one of them will be able to be elected in just over 30 days, so the council will have an opportunity, or the mayor, to fill that seat in that short order. There's much of the agenda that we've dealt with has already been prepared on the path, so all of you have heard most of the agenda items. So hopefully I'm not leaving anybody in the lurch by not completing the term. I owe a great debt of gratitude to the residents of Smyrna for welcoming my family and me, and then electing me to the city council post eight years ago. We moved here 11 years ago, so I wasn't here long when I offered for public service and the citizens saw fit to give me an opportunity, and I appreciate that. These eight years have been a high honor for me and my family. I want to thank those, the many of you that have, and it's too many to enumerate here, I apologize, who played a role in guiding, coaching, supporting, and humoring my occasional pontifications. Thank you for what my term on council has been and for the valuable instructive and rewarding chapter that it has become for me. My public career has included local, state, and federal level positions, I've enjoyed them all, but felt the most fulfilled when serving my community at each of my local levels. When I had a chance in my hometown of Brunswick or my adopted hometown of Smyrna, I've enjoyed the local level more than anything else. It's very fulfilling and rewarding. Taxing and frustrating. First, the city has been well-served over the years. I'm going to have to back up because I left the key element out of that. Let me deliver this. May I have three things?
He always does.
Every meeting, I've always had three things, and I wanted to be brief about this, but I wanted to say, first, the city's been well-served over the years by quality leadership. All right. Other people, victims to speak. I want to thank all of you, the quality leaders that have served alongside me during this journey, and it is, it has been especially fun to watch and participate while we have morphed as a city. The end of the Max Bacon era, as an eyewitness up close to it, is kind of a special thing that I'll treasure always. So whomever has the privilege of serving on the next councils and in that chair will always look back on the leadership that came from those who made this building possible and made this council possible in terms of what we know of Smyrna today. Secondly, I'm happy that I leave Smyrna in the best financial condition in its history, and I appreciate all those who came for. We have no mileage increase in many years. How many years is it, Mayor? Many years. It's been close to 25 years maybe since we've had a mileage increase. No other city can claim this. And we have balanced budget, we have surplus in the bank, we have some, a great credit rating, AAA credit rating. I am very proud to have been a part of Smyrna's financial story at the end of the day, and Pete Wood led the way, Terry Nullwitz, those with Corky and Derek, we've tried to make sure we emulated those who came before us. And the whole of Smyrna is in great financial shape. Thank you for that. And finally, I look forward to the bright future of Smyrna, the new leaders, the new opportunities on our doorstep, including a world championship. How are we doing on the night?
I don't know. I haven't...
Okay.
They're overcome by your speech, so there's nobody's watching.
My family and I are excited about embarking upon the next chapter of our life and will continue to support Smyrna as well as what we do in our future. I'll be around, you won't have to, you won't be getting rid of me that quickly. Thank you all for everything. It's been my pleasure to serve, and I look forward to continue to be a friend of Smyrna and supporting the efforts that you all choose to undertake. Thank you all. I bear farewell.
Ron, you want to introduce your family since you had them dress up to get here? And they sat in my office and watched the Braves game, so.
Stand up, boys. This is why we're choosing a new home. We're going to the school district to nurture them and have Cobb County tax money that we've been spending all these years to take advantage of that. Walker, even though he is taller, he is the younger of the two sons. He's been eating all the protein, Hunter's been playing video games in the meanwhile. But Walker is soon to be, this week, 12 years of age, 12. You remember, they couldn't even see over the Bible whenever we swore him in, when we were sworn in. And Hunter is now 13 years and a month, so he's soon to be driving. Beware. And I'm very proud of them. Their mother, my lovely bride Cindy, is how and why I came to Smyrna. I'm grateful that this family allows me to come home at night and take nourishment. So thank you all for allowing me to introduce them. I'm very proud of them.
Ron, thank you very much for your service. I don't think people really realize how much time it takes, and you have been one that's done not only as a council member, but other things, as CMA president, your involvement in GMA, so it does take a lot of time, and oftentimes you wonder why some folks, why we don't have more people that run for office, but it is a sacrifice from your family.
Well, I don't have to go to any more meetings like we've been doing, and so they can be grateful for that or worried that I'm going to be around much, much more, but they're about to enter, enter their middle school years, and I want to make sure that I'm there as their dad. That's my number one job in life, and I'm going to be that. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
We're going to take them to dinner.
Ron, and Cindy and family. I want to say it's definitely been an honor, a pleasure to have known you all for many, many, many years, but Ron, for you to take me under your wing as a mentor and guide me through this maze. So I know you're only a phone call away, and I just want to say thank you, and God bless you, and I love you guys both.
Thank you. I do retain my phone. Anybody who wants to call, they're available. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm going to take them to dinner.
Yeah. Take them someplace nice. Thank you. Thank you, Ron. We would have had something for Ron as a gift of something for eight years being on council, but we just found out, I just found out literally right after lunch today that he was going to do this, but I think it's a smart thing to do, but he could have acquired a residence, but he's only going to miss a couple of meetings, so. Thank you, Ron, so much. Mayoral report we have out of May is 2019, dash 348, Smyrna Youth Council recognition. Tim Gu, I see we got a lot of young kids out there. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the second, I can say second annual, but the second student, student youth council, Smyrna Youth Council group put together, and it takes a lot of time for the youth and students to participate this, and it's a lot of time for Scott and Landon and the staff to organize it and make it happen. So it's a great thing for the city. Hopefully it's a good positive experience for the, for our students and our future leaders of the, of the city. So with that, I think we're going to do a swearing in. Is that right? All right, but first let me, I guess, introduce the folks, and do you want them to stand up? And I'll do a little reading here. Smyrna Youth Council offers a means for Smyrna high school students to learn about government while representing and articulating the needs of the community's youth. Smyrna Youth Council provides selected members an opportunity to develop their leadership capabilities through team discussion, connect to the community through project and event planning, and acquire greater knowledge and appreciation for the political system. Members of our 2019 and 2020 Youth Council are Katrina Addington from Campbell High School.
Can you raise your hand so we know which one?
Thank you. Alex Bauer from Whitfield Academy. Tyler Blakeney from Campbell. Ariel Bundle, Campbell. Faith Jones, Whitfield. Sakshi Joshi, Campbell. Kate Mazur, Campbell. Maya Monthrope, Campbell. Nayila Morris, Atlanta International School. Hakim Rahman Osborne. Rodrigo Rodriguez, Campbell. Audie Shashitel, Campbell. Cole Simmons, Campbell. And William Taylor, Campbell. I'm going to come down there and do the oath. All right, everybody raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I do affirm that I desire to be a member of the Smyrna Youth Council.
That I desire to be.
That I will honestly and faithfully perform the duties assigned to me.
That I will.
That I will abide by the rules which govern Smyrna Youth Council members.
That I will.
And that I will be a good role model for all youth in Smyrna.
That I will be a good role model for all youth in Smyrna.
Thank you all for volunteering to do this. This is a great thing for the city and hopefully a good experience for you all. Congratulations.
Now, if I remember correctly, Scott, this is the second group. The first group, I think I came and spoke to, and it was about 99% ladies, so it's changed a little bit, but already good, good. If I would have been doing the swearing in, it wouldn't have been that long. It'd been like two words, and, but thank y'all very much. Thank y'all very much. Item B, 2019, dash 331, proclamation and recognition of Public Safety Appreciation Week, 6th, October 6th through the 12th, 2019. I think Mr. Norton has that, and I think we got some folks to recognize.
I do. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and then I'll ask the chief and his team to come up. Proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, Public Safety Appreciation Week. Whereas the city of Smyrna recognizes the vital role public safety plays in the quality of life offered in Smyrna, and whereas the city of Smyrna honors the men and women who put their lives on the line daily for the safety and security of Smyrna's citizens, and whereas all public safety organizations in Smyrna are a valuable asset to the community and committed to serving this community with assiduous dedication and commitment, and whereas the city of Smyrna is committed to maintaining the highest level of personnel, equipment, training, and service for public safety officials, and whereas the city of Smyrna feels it is the responsibility of Smyrna's citizens to honor public safety personnel by expressing their gratitude to the men and women who sacrifice themselves daily for the community's welfare and safety, now therefore I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, to hereby proclaim October 6th through 12th, 2019, as Public Safety Appreciation Week for the city of Smyrna.
Chief, I almost said Chief Hook again. Chief Lee, I know you've got some of your command staff and you've got...
Six and a half years, and you're still wanting to call me Chief Hook.
Well, you don't have to deal with it after...
It's nice to know, Mr. Mayor.
I got 90 more days.
See you, Marietta. Oh.
Go ahead.
No, anyhow, I want to thank you for this, but you know, I, there's two things I want to say to that, not just for the police department, but the fire department, you know, we have such a great working partnership with them, you know, they're our brothers and sisters as well. But the city of Smyrna and Cobb County as a whole, we have the best public safety in the nation. You know, we all work together so well, and during this week that we have these, especially with the Cobb Chamber of Commerce, how they put these programs on, it really means a lot to the men and women in public safety. So you know, we also recognize, you know, communications officers, EMS personnel, as well as different state and federal organizations. I am going to ask all my officers to stand up. Most, they're Baptist tonight, they're in the back. Yeah, go ahead. Thank y'all for being... Boy, stand up, come on. I know you're not one of my officers technically, but you know, you are here with the fire department.
Yeah.
But thank you, gentlemen, you have a seat. But this morning, at the annual Cobb County Chamber of Commerce Public Safety Appreciation banquet where they do awards, it was kind of a Smyrna day. The chaplain, our senior chaplain, Shell Osman from Life Church, he's also the chaplain, one of the chaplain for the fire department, was selected to give the invocation. But most importantly, come on up, Merritt. Sergeant Meredith Holt, Cobb County Public Safety Officer of the Year. This is the beautiful trophy that she got, and you know where his trophy's made?
Yep.
Lily Glass.
Lily Glass.
Smyrna, Smyrna, Georgia.
Beautiful.
And I'm going to say a few words, I'm going to let, I'm going to put Meredith on the spot real quick, but part of the reason she got this award, number one, Meredith has been detectives ever since I've been here.
About nine years.
About, even longer than I've been here. When it comes to investigating crimes against children, she is the best in the state of Georgia. She mentors new detectives coming in. She's also a highly sought off, sought out, we had the Attorney General's Office trying to hire her away from me, sent SWAT team down to the state cap. But she works with the FBI match task force, which goes after pimps who are prostituting out, you know, children under 17, and she's been involved with that for a long time. And one of the things that she's done recently, working with former city councilwoman Terry Nullwitz, who is now our, one of our state representatives, got the law changed to make pimping a felony, because traditionally in the past, we would bust a pimp, it is a misdemeanor, and it might cost them $1,000 and a couple of days in jail, and they just consider that's just part of doing business because they're making more than that. And she testified before the delegates in the state house, and we were able to get that, well, I say we, she was able to get that pass through. And this time, Merritt, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. It's an honor to come here tonight and share some exciting news for the city of Smyrna that I'm very grateful to be a part of, and I'm happy to be here and I'm delighted to have met so many people this morning and last week when I did a training for Smyrna Business Association, but thank you. Thank you for your support. Thank you, Mayor Bacon. I know that you're leaving soon, but I have always enjoyed working here at Smyrna and running into you and talking to you, and I'm just very grateful. So also work for wonderful chief over here, and I've got command staff and everybody behind me, and they do support me. They support me on a regular basis, because a lot of work that I do is throughout the state, and I'm just very thankful, so it's been an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. I just wanted to say this, this is, I have no doubt, I've been here 40 years, and this is the best police force, from the top all the way down to the last person we recruited. Also, our fire department is second to none. When you look at salaries, if we ever lose any of these men, shame on us. We have got to pay the salaries to keep them here, and that's why, that's part of why we're as good as we are, is being able to pay those salaries, but also to make sure that we have the people in the, in the positions to pick the right people. These are all David's leaders, and they reflect so well on the city, so that I'm going to miss. I'll miss hanging out and talking to you, but I'm, we're so proud of you and what you've brought to Smyrna, so congratulations, and be careful with that. It might, if you hit it on something, it might, may not be repairable, so.
Yes, yes, I'm very protective of it. It's in bubble wrap, and I'll be very protective on the way home, so.
Congratulations so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Item four is land issues, zonings and annexations. Item A is 2019, dash 318, public hearings, honor requests, Z19, dash 014, modifications of site plan for 130-unit town home development at Riverview Landing, 22.57 acres, landlot 171 to 172, Riverview Road, the Arden Company. Is the applicant here? Okay. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Arden Companies LLC is requesting a zoning amendment to modify the site plan and building elevations for a portion of the 82-acre mixed-use Riverline, pardon me, Riverview Landing development. The applicant is proposing to replace the 65 single-family detached units with 130 townhomes. This would increase the total townhome units in the development to 317 units and remove single-family detached product from the development. Community Development recommends approval of a zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations with conditions, and this would be carried over from zoning case number Z19007, and our community development director, Rusty Martin, is here to give more information.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to, that would like to make any public comment concerning this modification of the site plan? All right, let the record show there is none. I'd ask for the applicant. Well, this is in, would have been Ron Fennel's district. I'm going to ask Mr. Corky Welch to take care of this, and I'm sure he's going to ask Rusty Martin.
If you would, give us a little background on this subject. I would appreciate it.
I'll try to run through this as quickly as possible, but I need to go back a few years and bring you to the present day. The subject property is located along Riverview Road. It is just south of Dickerson. The total site area for the Riverview, Riverview Landing development is more or less 82 acres. The property that we are discussing today is approximately 22 acres. It is the light blue outlined properties. The orange outline is the total Riverview Landing project. There is no zoning change associated with this request. It'll remain mixed use. They are just purely requesting to modify the site plan and the building elevations associated with it. City's future land use map has this as mixed use as well. That will remain unchanged with this request. As you can see, the contiguous zoning, the contiguous land uses around are industrial, mixed use, and medium density. I'm going to go through the background of this, just so the people that haven't heard this case before fully understand what's going on. In 2011, Cobb County rezoned this property from industrial to a mixed-use development that was approved with 155 single-family residences, 332 townhomes, 165 condominium units, 200 residential senior housing units, and 850 apartment units. two hundred residential senior housing units, and eight hundred and fifty apartment units for an overall development of seventeen hundred residential units and approximately one hundred and ninety thousand square feet of commercial space. That development did have to go through DRI review, through ARC and Greta, and was recommended for approval. And between the Cobb County, between Cobb County zoning and Smyrna's annexation, the applicant applied for a grading permit in Cobb County. They graded most of the site and demoed some of the existing buildings out there. In two thousand and thirteen, the development was then annexed into the city of Smyrna. And then the developer began construction of the Riverview Road improvements from Dickerson Drive all the way down to Nichols Drive. And then in two thousand and seventeen, there was another zoning amendment to modify the site plan. This was for basically six hundred and eight residential units and three thousand square feet of commercial space. So, they significantly reduced the scale of the project down. After that zoning amendment, the apartment developer began constructing the three hundred and ten units along Riverview. And then in two thousand and nineteen, the property owner came back for another zoning amendment to modify the site plan and building elevations. And this time, it was to increase the multifamily from three hundred and ten units to five hundred and eighty units. So, they added a new apartment development, and then to increase the commercial from three thousand square feet up to seventeen thousand square feet. With this proposal, the applicant is proposing to eliminate the single-family homes, to go from sixty-five down to zero for single-family, and increase the townhomes from one hundred and eighty-eight to three hundred and seventeen. With this change, they're proposing a net change of sixty-four residential units. This is the currently approved site plan. We'll walk you through this. This is where the location of the sixty-five single-family homes is within the development. These were the first three hundred and ten apartment units that are currently under construction, and the building that's along the river should be receiving its first COs here in the next couple months. Then one hundred and eighty-eight townhomes, so it's up along Nichols Drive and then along the river on the north end of the site. And then the second apartment complex, which is two hundred and seventy multifamily units. And then this is the stormwater detention facility for the whole development. And with all that, the property owner and the apartment developers are proposing to dedicate twelve acres approximately of green space along Chattahoochee. This is the subject site. Some pictures of the apartment. Community Development is recommending approval of the requested zoning amendment with several conditions being modified or deleted due to a new zoning plan. First, we're proposing to eliminate the single-family home portion and increase the townhome development portion to the requested number. And then we adjusted several other zoning conditions that address dates on plans and such as that. We didn't add any new significant zoning stipulations because there's already seventy zoning conditions on the site that we think cover everything adequately. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Martin?
Rusty, I think you said originally Cobb County proposed seventeen hundred units thereabouts. What's our total at this point, as proposed?
Um, I had that number. I think we're just, we're in the high eight hundreds.
Yeah, so we've essentially, we've taken it down from seventeen hundred to eight, nine hundred, somewhere thereabouts.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Tell me how, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions, Mr. Martin?
Rusty, you mentioned the elevations we're going to change, and I see we have a handout with all the different, can you just, the different designs? Anything significant on the different, the different design changes?
Um, for the townhomes, no. I think some of them were, these are going to be two-story product. I think they originally may have had three-story product, but for the most part, as far as the facade materials and the architecture, no, not really.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Applicant, please step forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Ms. Adler Jones, for the record, my name's Garvis Sams. I'm with the law firm of Sams, Lark, and Huff in Valley and Marietta, and I represent the Arden Companies concerning this application. It's really an amendment, or an application for an amendment. Have with me tonight Mr. James Bykoff of the Arden Companies, Mr. Matt Kozinski of Planners and Engineers Collaborative, our chief engineer on the project. So, any of us, the three of us will be available to answer any questions, Mr. Welch, Mr. Mayor, members, at any time. Before doing so, I'd like to echo some of the kind remarks that you've said about former Councilman Fennel. He gets a ton of credit for what he's done for the city in ten years, two terms, however long it's been, but he gets a lot of credit specifically with respect to this. Right now, you have a prolific position on the Chattahoochee River by way of a donation, but also by way of the city's participation with respect to the lineal park. It's not only a part of the development, mixed use development we're talking about, but also available and connectable and easily reached by your city residents, whether they live there or not. He deserves to be recognized. I don't know if he's gone on to dinner or not, I suspect he has, but I just want to take this opportunity for the record to thank Ron Fennel for all he's done for this project, but more importantly, everything that he's done for the city. I met him the second day he was on the job at a coffee shop in front of West Village, and from the very beginning, he hit the ground running. So, and I know that you know I'm telling the truth, because he's not here to cast a vote one way or the other, so I have to be.
He's waiting on you to come pick up Sabbath.
This is a tract of land I've been involved with for ten years, and I know we need to keep this brief. Rusty's done a good job of briefing you. It was zoned in Cobb County in two thousand and eleven. Twenty thirteen, we rezoned and annexed it, brought it here to the city. It's been a part of the city now for six years, which is longer than it was in Cobb County. In two thousand and seventeen, you approved a mixed use development, went through ARC and Greta. It became, instead of a two million square foot mixed use development, became a residential development. The last time we were before you, we added about eighteen thousand square feet of commercial, river-driven commercial, chef-inspired restaurants, coffee shops, live-work-play type of components that will really be attractive to the tenants in the multifamily component, and now tonight, the townhome component which we are presenting. Tonight, we're asking for an amendment which does allow for, is asking for approval of the twenty-two acre tract that Mr. Martin mentioned for one hundred and twenty-nine townhomes. The architecture has, in fact, Mr. Cool, changed since the original submission, not since the stipulation letter that we submit on September the twentieth. But what you have in the package before you is, of course, the cover page, you've got the, an aerial photo, you've got a revised site plan, you've got renderings and elevations that show site distance issues that your public works director has requested. You've also got information regarding detention, water quality, and hydrology. And then you've got nine different architectural styles and compositions, and Mr. Martin's correct, it has gone down to two stories. It's a combination of rear and front-loaded product, all of its twenty-four feet in width. So, these are price points based on the square footage, and the square footage is going to be from eighteen hundred square feet. My letter says up to twenty-four and greater, but actually twenty-eight hundred square feet, twenty-eight hundred square feet and greater. The price points on these will run from the high three hundreds to the high four hundreds, depending on their positioning, their appointments, and of course, the upgrades. The rear-loaded product is going to be seventy-two of those, and then the balance of it, fifty-seven, will be front-loaded, as I mentioned, all twenty-four feet in width. Vehicles will be two in the garage, two on the driveway. As you can see with the site plan, we have strategically positioned guest parking, which is a requirement, but also quite candidly, it's a requirement for life safety purposes so that your fire apparatus will be able to maneuver on the interior of this and have interior maneuverability and accessibility. The September twentieth letter included your usual boilerplate stipulation regarding ten, maximum ten percent rentals. Well, in this instance, we wanted some teeth, you wanted some teeth, and so did your staff in that. And so what we've agreed to do is that conditions, covenants, and restrictions will contain a mandatory HOA that will have provisions specifically regarding the obligation of the property owner, the developer, to submit to the community development director every year on a yearly basis, the number of units that are being leased, the identification of those units, and the residents during each calendar year. And we've also agreed expressly, as a condition of the zoning, that your community development department and your code enforcement division have, to the extent that we can grant that by way of stipulation or condition, the legal authority to enforce that condition. The reason I bring that up, there are, there's a movement afoot nationally. You're seeing companies that are swooping in to jurisdictions, and they're buying homeowner-occupied product en masse and renting those. And this is not a rentable type of community, except with respect to the multifamily, and we want you to feel comfortable with that. Cumulatively, you've got twenty pages, pages of staff analysis, you've got ten years of stipulations and conditions, you've got recommendations from ARC, Cobb County Stormwater Management Division, Cobb DOT, and all the letters that I put together, including the September twentieth, which is the most recent. I was given advance notice by a key staff member that it would be best if I could keep this as short as possible, so what I'm going to do is simply state that it's clear that we're in conformity with your future land use map. It enhances connectivity. It really leverages and focuses this product or these products with the utilization of the Chattahoochee River, again, with the city's most prolific and extensive exposure on the Chattahoochee. And it's a strategic expansion of the city's boundaries to place you as a city council from a policy-driven perspective to do some things in the future, which could create this strong sense of identity that we think Riverview Landing has. And for those reasons, we do ask Mr. Mayor, Mr. Welch, and members that you follow staff recommendation. Thanks, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Sams?
Yes, I do. I have a question. Yes, thank you. I know that Rusty had mentioned earlier about dedicating green space. And if you're looking, if I'm looking at it and looking at where they're going to build, which is kind of up on a slope, is that green space going to be behind the townhomes and the others that they're building? Is that going to be along, also along the Chattahoochee where they already have, like, an amphitheater?
The green space with respect to tonight's proposal is on the other side of Riverview, but we've established by virtue that our earlier appearance before you, before you, I think in April of this year, the lineal park and all of that, but there are pockets of green space throughout the, throughout the development, on the north side of Riverview.
Question for Mr. Sams. I might have missed it. What's the maximum number, number of rental units that the HOA will?
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And then I assume it's market conditions and, you know, looking for a successful project, but why the switch from single-family detached homes to where we're going?
That's the market. I mean, it truly is, and I don't want to sound repetitive, but what we're finding in the demographics of this stretch of Riverview, the sandwiched in between South Cobb Drive and Veterans Memorial, double-income millennials, particularly with respect to the highly amenitized, multifamily component, and then the move down or up, however you want to say it, is going from the apartment dwellers to the homeowners with the townhomes. And the market for single-family detached, it simply doesn't exist for this stretch of this quarter at this time. I have to tell you, when I woke up Friday morning and I saw an inferno on Riverview Road, I jaw dropped. I'm not happy that it's anybody, but I'm glad that it wasn't a fire pertaining to this particular development, but I'm not sure why I brought that up, but I did.
Me either. Things were going real well.
Yeah, they were.
Any other questions, Mr. Sams?
Mr. Sams, what, do they have a completion on this project?
If they do, they haven't shared it with me. It's market-driven. I'll tell you, like everyone, when we filed this a couple months ago, Sterogenics hit the fan, and everyone was just kind of scratching their head, you know, what's going to happen? And McKinley Homes, the builder, weighed that, weighed it very carefully, but it didn't change their business model, it didn't change their pro forma. They intend to deliver the totality of these townhomes, I think, within twenty-four months. Yes, I got a yes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hearing no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 2019-318, public hearing for zoning requests Z19-014, modifications of a site plan for one hundred and thirty unit townhouse development at Riverview Landing on twenty-two point five seven acres, landlots one seventy-one, one seventy-two, Riverview Road, by the Arden Companies LLC.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this modification. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six, six zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You all have a good evening.
Item five is previous licenses. We have nothing there. Item six is formal business, A 2019-342, approval to allocate a total of eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars, one hundred thousand from the FY twenty-one city budget, and seven hundred and thirty thousand from the FY twenty-two city budget, to fund half of the required twenty percent match for transportation improvement program, infrastructure, and capital investment grant for the Atlanta Regional Commission for the cost of construction and construction related to activities associated with the construction of a pedestrian bridge over the Cobb Parkway, and to authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
This pedestrian bridge project was previously, previously, pardon me, identified in the Spring Road corridor study adopted by mayor and council in May of two thousand and seventeen. The city of Smyrna has identified four million dollars in the city's proposed two thousand and twenty-two SPOLOST project list for this pedestrian bridge project. Staff has proposed four different funding scenarios to address funding this project. One example, if the two thousand and twenty-two SPOLOST passes, and a referendum may occur in November of two thousand and twenty-two, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty, the city's portion of the match, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars, can be reimbursed back to the city of Smyrna out of the two thousand and twenty-two SPOLOST funds allocated for the pedestrian bridge once those funds are collected. The pedestrian bridge project would be a grade-separated pedestrian crossing from the west side, the Smyrna side of Cobb Parkway, to the east side, the Battery side of Cobb Parkway. It will provide safe access for pedestrians across eight lanes of traffic on Cobb Parkway, and connect the city of Smyrna to the Battery SunTrust Park multi-use complex. The proposed funding request includes estimated costs associated with engineering, right-of-way acquisition, and construction of the proposed pedestrian bridge. Staff does recommend approval.
This is under Mr. Derek Norton. Mr. Norton?
Yes, sir. This is something that we've been working on for quite some time, staff. I know Tom and Ken Sudworth, when he was here, and Rusty now, working on this. As Ms. Adler Jones said, we put four million in the SPOLOST recommendations for this bridge. But the way this works is if we get this grant from ARC, then we split the rest of the cost with Cumberland CID. So, if you'd have told us way back when we first started this, that this would cost us eight hundred, our share of a pedestrian bridge would be eight hundred and thirty thousand. SPOST money, if approved by the voters, to do it anyway. Is there any questions before I make a motion?
I do have a question, and I've thought about this two minutes ago. It's a legal question. Mr. Cochran, can we legally bind the council for the F Y twenty-two city budget?
Yeah, well, that's a good question, Corky. What we do generally is the first meeting of the new council, we ratify things like this. So you would, if approved, you would adopt it for now, but then you would put it on another agenda, the new council would put it on another agenda to do then. Because, yeah, you're right, we couldn't bind it otherwise.
I'm supportive of the issue, and I just, when we were talking, thinking about it, just reading through it, I thought of that, so.
Yeah, that's an issue that actually came up at staff level, so that's the way to handle it. There was just some urgency, I think, to get it out before.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to approve item six A, 2019-342, approval to allocate a total of eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars, one hundred thousand from the F Y twenty-one city budget, and seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the F Y twenty-two city budget, to fund half of the required twenty percent match for a transportation improvements and program infrastructure and capital investment grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission for the cost of construction and construction-related activities associated with the pedestrian bridge over Cobb Parkway.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six zero. Thank you very much. Tom, thanks for your hard work on this, too. Appreciate it. Item six B, 2019-329, approval to purchase five equipped Ford Explorers for the police department as part of the F Y twenty vehicle replacement fund at a total cost of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents. This vehicle purchase will be through the state contract of Wade Ford, thirty-eight sixty South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia. I'll just turn that over to Mr. Norton, if that's okay, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yeah, so this is just scheduled vehicle replacement out of our vehicle replacement fund, so I'll make a motion to approve item six B, 2019-329, approval to purchase five equipped Ford Explorers for the police department at a total cost of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents from Wade Ford.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six zero. Item C, 2019-326, approval to award RFQ twenty dash zero zero two, water line installation Church Street to the lowest bidder, Ardeto Construction Company, Inc., twelve ninety Austell Road, Marietta, Georgia, three double oh oh eight, for two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars from the, sorry, from the Water C I P, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Want to talk about that?
I don't want to talk about that.
This is, do you want to talk about that, then?
I don't want to talk about it.
This is just a simple water main installation that it's a replacement for an existing main that's old and tired. With that, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve item C, 2019-326, approval of the, to award RFQ two oh dash zero zero two, water line installation along Church Street to the lowest bidder, Ardeto Construction Company Incorporated, Marietta, Georgia, for the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars, to be funded from the Water C I P, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six zero. Thank you very much. Item D, 2019-343, approval of replacement extraction equipment by utilizing the N P P Gov Cooperative Contract Number P S seventeen zero zero seven to Georgia Fire and Rescue Supply LLC located at six oh two Water Tank Road in Canton, Georgia, three zero one one five, in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-six cents, funded from the F Y twenty C I P, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Jones, give us a little background on that.
Pretty much said it all.
That's what it is. It's just, it's replacement equipment.
It's replacement equipment.
Mr. Derek Norton?
Yeah, so this is just replacing the extrication equipment at each station. It's scheduled replacement. So at this time, I'll make a motion to approve item six D, 2019-343. This is approving the replacement extrication equipment at the total cost of ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-six cents, as previously stated by the mayor.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six zero. Is it six zero? Item F, 2019-347. Let's go back to E.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, E.
2019-344, approval to replace fire response command vehicle by utilizing city of Smyrna, city of Atlanta, contract number one zero five nine zero dash W S to Wade Ford at thirty-eight sixty South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, three double oh eight two, in the amount of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars, funded by the F Y twenty-twenty vehicle replacement fund, to authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. This, again, is just a replacement. I'll turn it straight over to Mr. Norton.
Yes, sir. Again, scheduled vehicle replacement out of the F Y twenty-twenty vehicle replacement fund, so I'll make a motion, item six, to approve item six E, 2019-344, approval to replace fire response command vehicle by utilizing city of Atlanta contract number one oh five ninety dash W S to Wade Ford, in the amount of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six zero. Item F, 2019-347, it's approval of the purchase of a Ford F five fifty and a hydro dump bed, RFQ twenty dash zero one one, F Y twenty-twenty Parks Dump Truck Replacement, funded by the F Y twenty-twenty Vehicle Replacement, using the State of Georgia Contract Number nine 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 dash zero zero one, S P D zero 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 one five five, from Wade Ford, located at thirty-eight sixty South Cobb Drive, Smyrna, Georgia, in the amount of fifty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. In response to that, I'll let Mr. Norton make the motion to approve that.
Glad to. This is replacing a seventeen-year-old dump truck that we have in Parks and Rec, so I'll make a motion to approve item six F, 2019-347, which is purchasing a Ford F five fifty and a hydro dump bed to replace, this is the dump truck replacement.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six zero. Item G, 2019-345, approval to enter into agreement with Civic Plus, three oh two South Fourth Street, Suite five hundred, Manhattan, Kansas, six six five oh two, for their Civic Ready Mass Notification Product, in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. I'm going to ask Ms. Tammy Sadler-Jones to explain that one to us. The other one's been replacements, so if you don't mind, Tammy.
Sure. The city of Smyrna is currently utilizing Civic Plus, plus with their Civic Rec product, which is currently being used in our Parks Department. The addition of the Civic Ready product will allow our emergency management personnel to do mass communication messaging. It can be done internally, and it can be done for the public. Our fire chief and emergency management director and the purchasing manager recommends approval of the Civic Ready Agreement in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Mr. Derek Norton?
Ms. Sadler-Jones, this is almost exactly what we approved for Parks and Rec a couple weeks ago, a month ago, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item six G, 2019-345, approval to enter into an agreement with Civic Plus for their Civic Ready Mass Communication, uh, Mass Notification Product, in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Second.
Motion is second to enter into this agreement. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six zero. Item H, 2019-354, approval to term sheet between the city and Vinings Bank regarding a placement agreement of bonds used to refinance the outstanding obligation incurred to finance public infrastructure at the former Belmont Hills Shopping Center, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Jones, the background.
When the Atlanta Road Corridor Tax Allocation District was formed, the value of the property as estimated by Cobb County Assessor in two thousand and three was approximately seventy-three point six million dollars. Today, after the success of the redevelopment, the value is in excess of two hundred and fifty-two million dollars. The success of this Belmont Hills development and the increased value allows the original obligation to be refinanced at favorable terms. Staff does recommend approval, and just for the public, this is the Belmont Hills Shopping Center that's in the intersection of Atlanta Road and the Wendy Hill Road.
Let's see, that is, Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Without getting into a lot of detail, that I would embarrass myself trying to explain, the bottom line of this is that it will save us an enormous amount of money toward the end of this project and cut off the life of the payback of this loan. With that, I will make a motion to approve item, excuse me, 2019-354, the approval of a term sheet between the city of Vinings, city and Vinings Bank regarding a placement agreement of bond used to refinance the outstanding obligation incurred to finance public infrastructure at the former Belmont Hills Shopping Center, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents.
Second.
Motion is second to approve this terms and replacement of the bonds. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? I don't think you can abstain.
You'll have to, the question, can you recuse yourself? I mean, you'll have to, what would be the ground? I mean--
Why would you want to abstain?
Yeah, and what would be the grounds for the recusal? I can't answer the question without knowing what the ground would be.
I think every, each one of us has an obligation that we need to vote for or against it. To abstain, I think, is shirking your responsibility. If you don't, if you vote against it, you vote against, you vote for it, you vote for it.
Yeah, I don't see any legal recusal requirement, so, you know.
That's approved five one. Ms. Wilkinson votes in the negative. Item I, 2019-355, approval of right-of-entry with Newberg, Andries, and Company as administrator of the Wendy Hill Joint Venture, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents. Ms. Jones, the background?
As part of the Roswell Street Roundabout Project, the city needs to acquire right-of-way and construction easements. This parcel has several title issues and a complicated ownership structure. The city has prepared an agreement that will allow it to work on the property prior to resolving the ownership transfers. The city will pay ten thousand dollars under this agreement, and that amount will be credited to the city upon final resolution of the transfer. Staff does recommend approval.
Let's see, I think that's Mr. Welch, isn't it?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, our attorney has explained this, too, and it's a simple means of giving us right-of-entry on here in simple terms. But with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 2019-355, approval, approval of right-of-entry with Newberg, Andries, and Company as administrator at Wendy Hill Joint Venture, and authorize the mayor to execute all related documents.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six zero. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none tonight. Before I do the consent agenda, just so folks know, we only, it's not that we don't have a lot of things going on in Smyrna when we don't have a commercial building permit. Those, usually those commercial building permits, permits are for large sums of money, so it seems like we never have any, but we have a lot of things going on. Item eight is the consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Approval of the September sixteenth, 2019, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the September sixteenth, 2019, pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the Thursday, September twelfth, 2019, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval of the city's wellness program renewal in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with corporate health partners, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item E, approval of the memorandum of understanding, M O U, between the city of Smyrna and Keep Cop Beautiful for the HEB Energy Bag, H E B, program, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item F, approval to allow Belmont Hills Elementary School to host a character parade on October twenty-fifth, 2019, from nine A M. to nine twenty A M. Road closures include a two hundred and seventy-two-foot section of Glendale Place, and allow the mayor to execute any related documents.
So moved.
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion? It's approved six zero. Item nine is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Mr. Tim Gu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. A couple of things, education committee-wise, the Campbell High School fall sports season is starting to wrap itself up, and several teams have made it to the state playoffs, including the girls varsity volleyball, and then Team Near and Dear to My Heart, the girls varsity softball team, making states for the third year in a row, and they play Etowah this coming week. So congratulations to the coaches and athletes. Second is, been contacted by quite a few pedestrians over recent days and weeks about concerns about pedestrian and traffic safety, particularly near schools, so I just want to mention it. It's an issue that's a main topic of conversation for the council, for the mayor, and for staff. So it's, so we appreciate the residents raising the concerns and notifying their council folks, but just want to mention it that it's something we're all thinking about, working on, and we'll do all we can to make the necessary improvements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wilkinson? Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to announce, make an announcement for Mary Moore from the library. In partnership with the Smyrna Tree Board, Smyrna Library will hold a special storytime among the trees this Friday, October the 11th, from 10:30 to 11:00 a.m. The group will meet in the Smyrna Arboretum near the gazebo. Bring a blanket if you wish and enjoy the stories about trees. The storytime is appropriate for families with kids aged three to six. After the stories, be sure to enjoy the beautiful tree scarves throughout the arboretum. With that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I just want to encourage everybody to put on their calendars the date of November the 17th, where we will have the Smyrna Museum grand reopening. So if you would put that on your calendar and plan on coming out and seeing the new museum. With that, I yield.
Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor. Want to take this time to welcome some of our new employees to the city, to the city of Smyrna family. Reneale Scott, Fernando Ricondes Nunez, and Brendan North, just welcome, welcome. Also want to say congrats to our Smyrna Youth Council. It's always exciting to see these young kids who are interested in, especially on the municipal level of government. It's such a great learning experience for them, so congrats to them as well. And finally, this morning at the event where Officer Meredith Holt was acknowledged and honored, I was so proud of Smyrna to know that we have a police department and a fire department as well that's so highly recognized. So hats off to each and every one of them. And just again, a special congratulations to Sergeant Meredith Holt. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know about you guys, but I was so happy Saturday morning that it wasn't 90-plus. I had almost considered moving to Montana because at least then I could have had snow instead of 100-degree heat. But anyway, it was very pleasant this weekend, and I hope that we get to have some more days like this and not go into an immediate winter cycle, so thank you.
Mr. Derrick Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick statement about Ron Fennel. I want to say I think he was a very good council member who really put in his time. I've got a lot of respect for the time that he committed away from his family and his diligence in chairing the finance committee. And just want to remind everybody, it is Public Safety Appreciation Week. Please, as you see your public safety personnel around town, tell them how much you appreciate them. With that, I yield.
Ms. Jones, anything else?
Yes, sir. I want to recognize Masella Machochi. Can you wave your hand? She is an exchange student from South Africa, and she's been shadowing me today and learning about the city. And she will be with us for a total of 10 months in the metro Atlanta area. She has a host family. I believe she said they live in Vinings Estates, and she is a student at Campbell High School. So I enjoyed having you today and learning about South Africa.
Glad you're here. Scott Andres, I know you're out there in the audience, but stay out there, that's good. Just joking. I didn't know you were gone, I thought you were. Ms. Scott Cockham.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Terry Graham.
Good evening. I'd like to just let everyone know that we're having a municipal election on November the 5th. We start advanced voting on October the 14th. It will be held at the main office in Cobb County at the election, Cobb County Elections. Also, on October the 21st through 25th, and then October the 28th and November 1st. On November, October the 28th and November 1st, we will also be holding early election at the Smyrna Community Center. So just come out and vote.
Tina, you have anything? Thank you. We do, we do not have a show call hearing. Got several folks signed up for citizens input. Pat Burns, trishianburns1@gmail.com, Hispanic Heritage is her topic.
My name is Pat Burns. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Smyrna. Stories hold families together. Funerals, weddings and holidays are when we talk about our childhood, our parents and extended family and crazy uncles and aunts. The mayor is a prime example of a good storyteller.
Terry.
Over 15 years ago, I began collecting stories and video histories along with photos of Smyrna World War II veterans for our museum. It was made into a film, The Lieutenant and the Cobb County Boys. The lieutenant was Lieutenant Dot Bacon. This extensive photo collection and the film have been on view at the Atlanta History Center, the University of West Georgia, in Marietta, as well as in Smyrna. Smyrna's first Hispanic Heritage celebration will take place in a few weeks. It will be celebrated through a collection of stories and photos of our Hispanic residents. You have a self-portrait of a former Campbell High School student who is now attending Chattahoochee Tech. Her story is brief. She says, "On school bus rides, one kid would call me Mexican burrito. I finally called his mom and told her. He got grounded and wasn't allowed to go to a soccer tournament because his mom wouldn't let him for what he called me." Our stories honor our roots. They make us a sustainable tapestry, working together whether we come from Russian immigrants, Irish immigrants, or Central America. I trust with your support by honoring our diverse residents and population, we will continue with celebrations and events throughout the year.
Louis Wheaton, 4828 Claybrook Drive, elections is his topic.
Good evening to all the staff, ladies and gentlemen of the council, the mayor, certainly all the residents, whether you're here or watching virtually. I'm more than happy to be here and to let many of you all know that already know, certainly that I'm running for the Ward 7 council seat, recently vacated now by Ron Fennel, who I will say has been a really good person to communicate with and talk to over the years about the work going on. It's been a fun time. I know all of you all have been out and about in various ways that are on the council, presently communicating with individuals in the community. I want to encourage everyone, all the citizens, to maintain the vigor that we have about this community, maintain the vigor that we have about the love for the uniqueness that Smyrna is, the diversity, the beauty, the nature, and all the good things that are going on in this city, and make sure those stories remain told. Look forward to potentially representing Ward 7 residents and hopefully look forward to working with you all in the coming times. Certainly to all the residents, go out and vote, be a part of the process. It's a beautiful, beautiful process we have in this country. Take an active part in it and be grateful for the opportunity that you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Doug Hopman, 2221 Austin, Lake Drive, safety.
Good evening. I didn't, wasn't aware this was Public Safety Appreciation Week. It's kind of timely. He's got a couple of videos to show, and is there a mouse?
This is it.
Oh, that's it, okay. But the city of Smyrna and its residents have done a great job in promoting itself as a top 50, top 50 city to live, to the point that some people are willing their rest of life to get here. See if I can get that to work. Just want to have a couple of videos to show as an example of that.
I'm going to do this one first.
Okay, so here's an example. Comes up really quick. This is on Hurt Road going toward, coming towards Concord. You see, there was a vehicle that, in order to pass a moving vehicle, crossed over the yellow line and then went on its merry way. And I have another example. How do I get the other video? And the other one, I want to start it at about 7 minutes, 10 seconds. It's a long video. That one there, yeah. How do I get it to go over to about 7 minutes? Here's an example of another one on Concord Road going towards the Concord Bridge. And that's all we need, that's all I need to show. You can help me stop that. I don't have a solution for this. I sent some still images of both of these videos to Mr. Welch, and I just wanted to prevent, present the videos because I think they show more than, have more power than just some still images. I think we all probably have crossed yellow lines in the past to get around a UPS vehicle that's delivering a package or a postal truck that's delivering mail. But this is a new phenomenon for me, living in Smyrna for almost 22 years now. These two events happened within a week's time. And I know one is not in the jurisdiction of Smyrna, but these are folks that are coming into Smyrna and then also people that live in Smyrna. And my concern is this is going to be getting a lot worse, and I don't have a solution.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy Bartry, is that correct? Jenny.
Jenny Bartry, hi. Thank you, Mayor and council members.
4094 Laurel Springs Way.
Yes.
Sustainability is our subject.
Okay. I have lived here for 16 years, and I've loved my time in the city. When I arrived, I was so impressed with the lovely and quaint downtown with curbside recycling and well-maintained parks here. I have formed many lasting friendships and enjoy the outdoors and play tennis regularly with a diverse and eclectic group of friends. But over time, I've come to realize that Smyrna has not been keeping up with the times. Our world is facing a dire future due to climate change and global warming. With the constant record-breaking days and months of heat this summer, it's hard to imagine that there are climate change skeptics, much less deniers among us, but there are. We need fresh, new ideas and large-scale changes to be done at every level of government. We all know the saying that all politics is local. Before I knew about steroids in the coal ash that sits in unlined pits along the banks of the Chattahoochee River, I learned about people who live in vulnerable communities. There are, these are people who are mostly low-income and often brown-skinned people all across the world. I came to find out that I am living in a vulnerable community right here in Smyrna, Georgia, and these people are my friends and my neighbors. I came to find out that I am living in this vulnerable community, and we have become enraged and we're engaged and are going to demand that our local governments start making changes. We need to get off fossil fuels and adopt clean energy now. In our city and state, solar is plentiful and has gotten very cheap, so there is no reason for it not to be replacing our existing energy sources. And they are costly, those existing sources, they're costly to our citizens in terms of their pocketbooks, their health and the environment. I was at the Taste of Smyrna a few weeks ago and enjoyed it, as I do all the festivals the city offers. I visited with Mr. Norton and his family, and who, they're very lovely and friendly people, and they had a large tent right at the start of the festivities. Later, I found out that there were other local office seekers who apparently were denied the opportunity to have tents. I don't know if this was a political calculation or if this was a racial statement, but neither one is acceptable. Smyrna has gotten some bad press lately about its diversity and the attempts to celebrate with the proposed, with some of the proposed events being voted down. I'm not going to weigh in on that other than to say that we need more diversity represented here on the city council, and I think you all agree. Smyrna can't sit back and wait while the rest of the state and county move forward with protecting the earth. It's time for Smyrna to assume its role as a leader within Cobb County. I ask that you recognize the urgency of the moment and act accordingly. In addition, I ask that you pass an ordinance prohibiting smoking in public places throughout the city. The dangers of smoking and secondhand smoke are well documented. Atlanta and other cities within the state have done it, and it's time for Smyrna to do it also. Thank you very much.
Steve Razin, 1512 Grace Meadows Lane Southeast, Smyrna, election is his topic.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Steve Razin. I'm a proud 25-year resident of the city of Smyrna. I'm currently running for mayor. Seen some pretty amazing changes in the city in the last 25 years and happy to be a part of that. If elected as the new mayor, I'd bring 45 years of experience in the military, in aerospace industry, in real estate and commercial aviation to bear in this office. I need that because Max, you're pretty, pretty hard to follow, pretty hard to act to follow. I'll admit that. I do thank you for encouraging me to run, and one of the best things about running, I've found, is the people that you get to meet knock on their doors and talk to them. Also, the volunteers that I have working with me are some of the most amazing people I've ever met in my life. I enjoy working with them, enjoy running, and enjoy being a part of this very, very good city. Encourage everyone to vote come November 5th, and I thank you for the time.
Marilyn Blackburn, 1034 Huntington Trace, council is her topic.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and those watching virtually. My name's Marilyn Blackburn, and I'm running for Smyrna City Council reelection for Ward 3. I'm a 19-year resident of Smyrna, I'm a 33-year resident of the state of Georgia, and I am excited about my race and what I'm doing and the things that I have done for Ward 3. I'm running for reelection to Smyrna, for Smyrna City Council because I care. I care about environmental stewardship, which means that we need to work to make sure there's environmental protection, these environmental protection agencies, ensure that our citizens are safe as it relates to air, water and the soil. Economic development, we must look at the diversity of revenue sources by encouraging and going out and being proactive and bringing those type of businesses to the city that actually fit the vision in which we set forward. Want to talk about transit, we talk about safety with our citizens as well and workforce housing, but most important, I think Smyrna needs to have an inclusive government, a government that shows and reflects the community in which we serve, one that allows all voices to be heard. Again, Marilyn Blackburn, running for the Smyrna City Council, and you can find me at www.votemarilyneblackburn.com, and I ask that on November the 5th, you come out and vote. Thank you.
Susan Wilkinson, 2805 Stone Creek Road, reelection is her topic.
Thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Susan Wilkinson. I live at 2805 Stone Creek Road. It's where I've lived for 33 years. It's been my honor and privilege to serve as your council representative. I've lived in Ward 5 and Smyrna for 33 years, and at the time of qualifying, my opponent, I learned, has my opponent, I learned, has lived in Ward Five for less than three months. I believe my, my experience on the council and serving the citizens of Ward Five has allowed me to be a good voice, a strong voice for the citizens of Ward Five. And my pledge is simple, it's to support your interests and priorities. And as your council member, it's always been my aim to listen and to respond to your individual concerns, to be a good steward of the taxpayers' resources, and preserve the integrity of our neighborhoods, and support the continued revitalization of Ward Five. And I hope you'll come out and vote on November fifth. Thank you.
That concludes the citizens' input. Before we adjourn, sorry to tell you, the Braves lost, so, sorry you had to sit here and watch this, but anyway. I do want to mention one thing that someone brought up, Doug Hopman, and I wish he hadn't left. The pictures he showed is an everyday occurrence. There are some crazy, crazy people. And I actually got into a confrontation with someone about a month ago because they were doing about seventy-five miles an hour, weaving in and out of traffic on Concord Road at four-twenty. I made the mistake of pulling up next to the individual and saying, you know, you need to slow down. And then that's when I got barraged with words that I had, I didn't even know. But anyway, then I went home. So it is an issue and our police department does an outstanding job, but we could sure enough put police cars everywhere, increase our revenue, and that's the only way that you're ever going to get anybody's attention really is to get in their pocket and find them, but for the safety of our community, it does worry me because we're a city of a lot of sidewalks and there's just people that don't really, I don't know how to say it any better than just say they really don't care about anybody but themselves, so hopefully we can do something with, with the traffic and on Concord and Hurt and, and other areas around Smyrna, so. Braves are going to win tomorrow, so don't worry about it. Adjourned this meeting at, when is it?
Wednesday.
That's what I said. Wednesday, eight-thirty-two, thank you. I need a, I need a pen. Give me a pen. Thomas Star, wait a minute, hold it, hold it, hold it. Thomas Star. I missed Thomas Star, I'm sorry, Thomas.
I was wondering, Max, how did you do that?
I'm sorry. Did I miss anybody else? Hold it. Hold it, hold it, hold it. Well, no, I got Susan. Thomas, go ahead, I'm sorry. I don't know, Thomas Star had signed up for citizens' input.
Thinking, I'll only be briefly.
Okay.
I got three, three situations.
Did I miss anybody else? Anybody else that signed up for citizens' input? That's the first time I've ever done that. Thomas, go ahead.
I think, I got three situations I'm going to talk about.
Okay.
Number one is I live on a baked street over in Smyrna, but I own property on Pasadena Boulevard, and there's a dumping problem that's going on. It's not just trash, it's on televisions, all kinds of stuff. I've worked with the public health, public safety, a public.
Public works.
Public works, three times, and they have been instrumental in picking things up for me. But the police officers, when I call them, so many times, they, they get angry and say, you know, something need to be done about this because it's ugly. Now, you remember the area where the body was found?
Yes.
A basketball court has been put down there. You know, you know that's odd to say. Okay, and I'm hoping that someone can do something about this. Okay, the second issue that I have here is I've been coming to meetings for quite some time and I've heard Alex Backless speak, and I've never heard any input or whatever said about him, or whatever the situation is, whatever he'd be talking about. And the third issue is, in Ward Three, my councilperson was stated as having a chip on her shoulder. Now I would like to know what is that chip? What is it all about? If anyone knows. Can you explain it to me?
I don't know what you're talking about with Alec Backless.
The paper, it's in the paper.
Don't believe, Thomas, don't, I'm not going to debate you about it. Stuff is in the paper. Everything's in the paper, not the truth. Do you think everything they write in the paper is true?
So what, so by her, by someone saying, by you saying that she had a chip on her shoulder, you're saying it's not true?
I'm not sure what you're exactly talking about. If you want to talk about this after the meeting, I'll talk to you about it, Thomas.
Okay, I tried to call you, but I couldn't.
Well, you didn't try very hard.
Okay.
Because my.
I'll, I'll talk to you after.
Yeah, I'm just shocked that you even confront me with this and like it like you're doing.
Don't be shocked, I'm for real. I'm trying to find out what's going on because it is in the daily journal that Ms. Blackburn had a chip on her shoulder, and that's my ward person, and I want to know what is all that.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Here's this right here. What, do you want me to sign, Scott? Oh, weird germ, sorry. That's what I get. Yeah, it was set up. Is that all of them?